Good evening. Welcome to the April 9, 2012 Ashland School Committee Meeting. Tonight's agenda, we will be interviewing our last of the four superintendent finalist candidates. We have a Mr. Rob LeBeau here from Mount Desert Island, Maine. He is a superintendent up there. How we're going to proceed tonight? We're going to start with, in a minute, with an opening statement for Mr. LeBeau. Then we will be asking a series of questions and then we will turn it back over to Mr. LeBeau for his opportunity to make a closing statement. I will begin tonight's meeting with our vision statement here in Ashland. "The Ashland Public Schools is committed to being at the forefront of student achievement by preparing students to be college and career-ready while promoting independence, respect, and critical thinking skills necessary to succeed as problem solvers in the 21st century." And with that, I want to welcome you, Mr. LeBeau. Thank you for coming to Ashland. You've had an opportunity to tour our district. And I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I had a great day. It's sort of reaffirming to be able to go into schools and know kids are kids no matter where you go. And same look of hope and vibrance and excitement and teach me in their eyes that has always lit a flame in me. So that's no different here. So you should be really proud of that. Opening statement? What you'd get from me is someone who's totally committed to kids and their learning. Honesty. I think most people, when you would talk to them, would say, "I wear myself on my sleeve." And where I've worked for 21 years, people know me very well, all the way back to my childhood. And I think they would say that I'm as honest as the day is long and what you see is what you get. I believe I'm a strong communicator, that I can communicate with -- and I've heard this. I've never thought it about myself, but I've heard people say that I can communicate with people from all walks of life, whether they be a kindergartner all the way to an old man in the last part of his life that I might disagree with, that I can talk to him as straight as I can talk to a kindergartner and have a good conversation with those folks. I can talk to kids that have made mistakes, have had to drop out of school, that I've tried to talk to coming back into school, that I've had to suspend from school, that I now see their kids coming into school. And I think people would say that I can communicate very well, that I'm straightforward. I don't think I'm blunt, but I can be accused of maybe being that a little bit. I don't think of it as blunt. I think of it as sort of straightforward, that sometimes I think you need to have straightforward talk. I've become a much better listener in my old days and when I was younger. So maybe that's part of getting older and maybe it's part of reflecting on feedback that you get. But I try to take feedback to heart. I'm a collaborator. I believe you don't come into a situation with solutions. I think you work together to solve problems. I have a lot of examples of things that I've done to solve problems. Maybe we'll get into those, maybe we won't. One prime example was to take six diverse teaching contracts on our island that had completely different pay scales and completely different language and work with the teachers to bring that in the first year, a study committee. It wasn't a negotiating committee. It wasn't looking over the eyes of somebody and playing a game. It was, how can we do this together in a win-win situation that everybody feels that they were treated properly in the end? And we took the six contracts and we cut and pasted them and looked at clauses from one to the other and went back and eventually came up with a mocked-up common contract for those six contracts. And then the next year, we played the negotiation game with that, in which we went through that and eventually TA'd and signed a completed common contract that we now are in our third three-year contract. We'll be starting our third three-year contract next year. And I say this and I don't mean it to sound cocky, but I've worked those contracts. I've never had agreements in the eight years I've been a superintendent. So I think that's a sign of being a good communicator and a collaborator, is that I believe when something comes up, you try to go to the source and solve it. You don't play power games with it. You try to figure out what's best for kids and you solve that problem. And the Teachers Association President and myself and the school committee chairs have very close working relationships. While I was in my break waiting to come in here, I had to call the Teachers Association President and reschedule a meeting for tomorrow because there were conflicts. And it had to do with a really touchy situation of a teacher from one of our schools, because we're separate employers and you can't just move them, having to go to another school in order to remain fully employed. And we had to go to the spirit of the contract and work that out so that employee remained fully employed under different employers. Because what had happened, she was a speech-language therapist, is a speech-language therapist, and she was three days in one place and two days in another, but the one that had the two days had to go to three days. Well, you can't work two places six days a week, so she was being told, "You've got to pick one of these or the other. Where are you going to work?" And it was like, well, you can't do that to a 25-year employee, say, "Pick one or the other." So what we found out was one of the other schools had a contracted service person through the hospital, and they had a two-day-a-week speech therapist. So we took her three days and what was the three days here and said, "Well, you're going to go two days over here." But you had to work that through the Teachers Association because that wasn't something that was automatically covered by the contract, but it was the right thing to do. And to maintain her seniority and her sick leave and all those kinds of things, you had to have good communication with her and have her be on your side and trust you, that you weren't doing something to the employee that was unfair. You were trying to keep them fully employed. So I think that's an example. I believe I have a superior work ethic. Probably too much. I think I work sometimes too hard to the expense of some things. I have experience in a classroom, in broad administrative experience. I have not forgotten what it's like to be a teacher. One of the reasons why I do the school visits and the lottery is to keep my hand in what you're supposed to be about, which is teaching and learning. And I think it would be too easy as a superintendent to just sort of sit behind budgets and policies and not remember what it was like to teach, the struggles of teaching. And I think the other thing in my opening statement, I'm near the end of my career, but I'm not at the end of my career. And I am in search of one last good, long challenge for a job, so that if I was lucky enough to be hired and it was the right match for me and for you, that I could perceive myself giving a long-term commitment. It's hard to promise something like that, but I think it takes five years before you make a difference in a school. First year, you sort of learn what's going on. The second year, you start working on some things that might need to be changed. And then five years from the day you walked in, you ought to start to see the mark of either your principal on the school or your superintendent on the school. You ought to see that. You ought to feel that in the school. And then you ought to enjoy that for a while and you ought to be part of that, so that at about 10 years, I think in a way it might be healthy to then look for other challenges. And even though I've been in the same school system for 21, I've changed jobs in that school system. So I look at the eight years I've been superintendent, the things that I'm strong at, I think I've done. So I'm looking for a new challenge. And I would be excited to consider this opportunity. Again, I've liked what I've seen. It's a very warm, friendly place, and I believe in culture and relationships, and that's what I look for. I said to some other folks where I was looking at some other opportunities that I had to come here and see for myself what it felt like, what it looked like. I'm a very visual learner. I can't just go to a website and read policies. I don't know if they really happen. You have to get there and say, "Okay, I feel that. I can sense that." They're sort of very tactile in what I do. And probably it's part of a learning disability of some kind, but it's also something you compensate for, is that I have to see and smell. I have to look in kids' eyes. I have to look in adults' eyes. I think they need to look in my eyes. And I think you can tell when a place is the right match. So I guess that would be my opening statement.
Thank you. Let's start with Pat.
First question. If you are selected as our next superintendent, could you please describe how Ashland Schools will be different in five years from what they are today?
Well, again, it would take me a while to first learn what your schools are all about. And I try not to prejudge kids. I try not to prejudge adults. I'd have to decide how they would be different based on what I learned about them in the first six or eight months, probably. I'm not very patient, so that it probably would be quicker than that. I'd draw some conclusions, but I also try to be more reflective than I used to be and to not make really rash, quick decisions. But I think you would find that you would take the strengths that are already in your schools and those things would be even stronger. And the weaknesses that you have or have, those wouldn't be issues anymore. There might be new things that crop up, but I think what a good leader does is focus on the positive, accentuate that, and then work to remediate those negatives, those weaknesses. So again, without knowing both those aspects, I don't think I could tell you exactly how they would be different. If you want sort of global explanations, I think all kids would love to be in school. All parents would be proud to have their kids go to your school and graduate from your schools. The town would support the schools as much as they possibly could without sacrificing their own existence. I think kids would like to be with each other. There wouldn't be cliques. Kids would accept each other. You'd have as close to no harassment in your buildings as humanly possible and not because of a zero-tolerance policy, because it's what people believed in. It's their values. It's what they came to realize it was part of going to Ashland, was you treated people with respect. And I think you'd see that. Now, it may already be here. I've seen a lot of it today, but I think five years later, you'd see a lot of that. I think your schools would be less rigid and structured along the lines of the traditional grades that we have, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. I think you'd see a movement towards standards. I think you'd see kids working on those standards according to their developmental readiness, that because I was a second-grade-level reader and I was third grade, that I wouldn't be behind the eight ball because of that. I'd be in a cohort of kids that were at my same reading level, that I didn't feel I was something less than the rest of the group, that I was not as smart as the rest of them, because I might be really good at another subject area and I might need to be pushed more in that area. And I would be in a different group with those kids if I was strong in science, but if I was a weak reader, I'd have extra time and extra work without feeling that I was lacking something. That would take a long time to get that way. I don't know if you'd do that in five years, but it would be a school where kids want to be there because they're being reached and taught at their own level. I think instruction would be tied to their passions. I think every teacher in your buildings would come to know their kids in a very intimate way. They'd know their learning style. They'd know their passions, their dreams, their frustrations, and that they would tailor their instruction to reach that kid in a different way, that if I had a lesson, I would reach you differently than I might reach her or him. The same concept, but I'd take the lesson and tie it to something you cared about, because if there's not a connection, if there's not a tie, then I don't think it sticks. Certainly didn't stick with me. I learned a lot of things that went, "Whew." Put them on a test. Next thing, put it on test. But I saw no sort of connection as to why it mattered. I think we would be teaching kids, and I don't know how much of that happens here, what they call habits of mind in Maine, which is to be a communicator, to be a collaborator, to be an independent thinker, to be a creative person, that we would be teaching that to kids. And we would be assessing that. It wouldn't be about the traditional academics that we do. It would be about the kind of lifelong skills that you need later on in anything that you choose to do, whether it be a husband or a wife or an owner of a business or whatever. You've got to have all those major strands that schools just don't teach. I think we would, one more thing, I think we would separate grades from behavior, that if you did your term paper and it was four days late, it wouldn't have gone down half a grade a day, because those were the rules. That I think you'd have two grades on that paper. If it was high-quality and it was late, it would say A or whatever, or met the standard or exceeded the standard. And over on the other side, equally as powerful, would say, "She doesn't get her work done on time. She's a slacker." And that gets reported. But what you were asked to do on that term paper was about a standard that you were asked to write about. It wasn't about whether it was in on time, that you separate those two things out and you do report them, you do measure them, and would mean something to a future employer. Really smart, but I don't know if I can have them being an air-traffic controller because they don't pay attention, you know? And they can't obviously be in that field if they don't pay attention to meticulous details. Or a college, you know, they're looking for the best applicants. I think you have those behavioral kind of things and habits of mind reported, and then you have the grades or level of achievement at what we expect every kid to know and be able to do to graduate from Ashland High School. So I see a college transcript having a couple of things on it, and it would tell me more about you than C-minus in social studies. I don't know if you know social studies when that happens, but if it's based on standards and you're measured on that, and then I measure those other things that are equally as important, that says more to be about you than how we do it now. So I could see us moving towards that, because I think that's the right thing to do by kids. And I think kids would accept that. A couple more things. I would see kids contributing back to their community. I would see them not just doing community service, but they would be doing service learning, which is taking a problem within the town and helping to solve that problem as part of their education. It's more than just painting a shed or whatever. It's, you know, if maybe there's a water quality problem and outflow from a dam or whatever, that they study that, they test that, they learn about that, and they help solve that problem. In Bar Harbor, we have this huge problem with water runoff. Thousands of tourists come in the summer. You know, all that water and trash goes into the storm drains, which drains into the bay. And it pollutes the bay, kills the clams, and kills the ecosystem of that bay. Kids went around and stenciled all the storm drains around Bar Harbor with "No Waste Here" and "Don't Dump Trash Here," and that was part of them learning about taking care of their world. That's a service-learning project. And I would think they would be reaching out and thanking the people that gave them the opportunity to have an education in a very open way, because your tax structure's totally different than ours, and there are a lot of people in your town, I would imagine, that are going without things so kids can have an education. And I think kids need to learn to say thank you. They need to give back. And I think you'd see those things. That would be a school system I would be proud to be part of. And I like to think I make a difference in a school system and I can leave my mark on a school system, that you have some sort of legacy, that when you leave, if I leave Mount Desert Island, I would hope that people could go to those schools and say that Rob LeBeau was there at one point. And that would be important, because if you don't have sort of a legacy of some kind, then it's kind of like, what difference does it make?
Just one question.
A long answer.
Pardon me?
A long answer. If you don't shut me off, you're going to get long answers.
No, but just one question as an example. When you, you know, the grade of what the child received, and then if they were late, that's a different, you know, standard. Now, those children that are late, would you look into why they're late?
Oh, yeah. I think part of what you do is you teach the fact that things are important not to be late. You just don't say, "Well, this was late." You talk to kids about why it is important to have timeliness, why that is an important standard, and then you would work at them at the next assignment to try to find what the reasons were that was. I mean, you could have a kid who's just got a horrible home life, and the reason they didn't get it done is because they're home and their parents are fighting all the time. Or they don't have power or something like that in some situations. And then you would work to try to find ways that they could stay after school, that you'd give them the support they need. You wouldn't just say, "You're a slacker," and that's the end of it. That would be something you then worked on, because it's a measurable standard, and you would try to get kids to understand why that mattered later on in the things they want to do, why timeliness was important, if you use that example. But I just don't think it should be part of the traditional grade, because it's not about what the assignment was, that grade when it's marked down as an example.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, I have number two, Rob. What do you believe is the single most important thing a superintendent can do to set the tone or climate for the school district?
The tone for the school district? To be passionate about education, to be out and around, to sell what you have that is good every chance you get, because bad stuff's going to happen, sort of always going to happen, and that you try to focus on as much positive as you possibly can. And you sell the good things about the kids you have. You go to a lot of events. You participate in a lot of stuff. I just think all those things are tremendously important, that you're part of the community and you show that you're committed to it. It's part of being a good superintendent. So I think you'd find me doing that, and I think if you talk to people that I've worked with over the years, that they would tell you that that's what I'm about.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm next, Rob. And I think you touched on this a little bit with your answer to Pat, but if you'd like to elaborate, I'm wondering what your top priorities are for students, what you value most for the students?
That they're challenged and that they feel comfortable in the school that they're in, that they're safe, not just physically safe, but emotionally safe. You know, if they happen to have alternative lifestyles or whatever, if they have to come from a different walk of life, that they're respected by their teachers, by their fellow students, that school's a good place to be, that that's super important. And it's, that's a hard thing to get to. That's a noble endeavor, especially with teenagers. And in my experience, been in high school, you know, I think you find it's a little sort of easier with the younger grades, but I just think that's critical, that they're challenged and that they feel it's a purpose to come into school. Because I know there's a lot of kids in school that just go there because you're supposed to go there, that they're pushed but not broken, you know, that you push a kid to a limit they don't know that they have. I think that's the formula that you use in coaching. If you're a good coach, you push a kid to a point where they didn't think they could go. And I think as a teacher, you do the same thing. You know that kid and you challenge them to go above and beyond so that they feel that it was a rewarding experience in a safe and supportive place. And those are probably the only two things that really matter. And you have a broad program. I think you have a, you should have balance. You know, you need to have sports and arts and music, that you can't just go with an academic core, because for a lot of kids, that's what makes them strong, is their passions in music and art. And I think you probably saw that when you came to MDI. I mean, we put a lot of money into our arts programs, because there are kids that that is what allows them to come to school and helps them learn, that, you know, learning music and expressing themselves is so important to who they are as people. So I think safety and security is number one.
And as a follow-up, and you mentioned a couple times about how important it is to know your student. How do you get it across to your teachers that...
You hire people who believe in that. Do you look for that in an interview? It's hard to change somebody who doesn't care about kids, who's been there for a long time, and say, "You need to care about kids." That teacher might have to go. Now, it might be because they're starting to be surrounded by people that are committed to kids and they feel that they don't sort of belong anymore in what once was sort of a secure place for them. I think the key, when you make changes, when you hire. When you hire administrators, when you hire teachers, we look for primarily people that care about kids. I think I told you guys a story, and I told it some today, that we always have students on the hiring committees. So that we'd be sitting around and Mike would be a kid on the committee, and when we got done interviewing, he'd be the first one to speak. And we'd say, "Mike, what do you think?" And in one case, he'd say, "I don't like that person. They didn't look me in the eye and they never asked me one question." And the adults who were leaning towards that individual sort of said, "I didn't notice that." But Mike noticed that, because he was looking for that. Is this person going to be about kids or is he about adults? And to me, that's absolutely huge. So it's hiring. And it takes a while. Sometimes there's a sort of a pace you have to go through to replace those in your building that you inherit that might not have that same philosophy. But every chance you get to have a hire, it's, "Here's my chance. Here's my opportunity." And you look through those applicants, and I look for that first. I don't look for their degree. I don't look for their background. I mean, they have to know their content, obviously, but I look for somebody who wants to be with kids, likes kids, wants to be around kids more than the classroom itself. I don't expect somebody to devote their entire life to school, because that can be a real mistake. But I do look for people that will contribute to school beyond their own classroom in some way. Advisor every couple of years or do the yearbook or coach a sport. I don't think they have to be three-season coaches and that sort of stuff. That's fine if they are, but I think contributing to the classroom so that kids see you in a different way, above and beyond just the teacher, I think's important.
Thank you.
Hiring is the key. It's the only way you make change.
Thank you, Robert. Based upon what you know of our administration's process of budget development, what will your particular skills add to that process?
I understand budgets very well. I think people would say that's one of my strengths. I think I can communicate that to, what we have is called warrant committees, not finance committees, so they're probably the same structure. And having to sell what those changes are, to be able to meet with boards of selectmen in towns and convince them why that budget is at X percent in a particular year, because you don't have the revenues or whatever, to be a very good communicator about those numbers, to know those numbers, to have helped put those numbers together around priorities that everybody said we believe in, tied to your strategic plan, tied to your goals for the year, that I think people would say that's very high on my list of strengths, is working with budgets. Now, I've had people say, "I don't really, I'm not familiar with budget constraints." That's been in a particular local paper in Massachusetts lately, because I got a question about, "How did I deal with budget constraints?" And my answer was, "Well, I've been there eight years as superintendent. That's 10 budgets a year. That's 80 budgets, and we've never had one turned down." Now, I don't, myself thinks that means I don't understand budget constraints. I think it means that we were very careful in what we asked for. We fought for what we believed in, and the check and balance system supported that. We had to convince a finance committee. We had to convince a selectman. We had to go to town meeting, convince the populace that came to town meeting. And in Maine, you have to have a referendum. After a town meeting is over, school budget's not done. The town side of the budget is done. There's a separate referendum on the amount raised at town meeting to support the schools. And anybody can go in there, whether they were at town meeting or not, and throw a no-vote in the box. And we've never had a budget turned down. Now, I think some of that's because their money goes specifically to their town and their kids. I think if we had one big $37 million budget, we would have a lot harder time selling that. But when you go to Islesford, little town off the coast of Maine, that is trying to keep their community going and they know school is important, they have 11 kids, somebody will put their hand up and say, "I just want to know how much the cost per student is this year." And you look at it and you go, "$52,500 per student." And they go, "That's a lot of money, isn't it?" You go, "Yeah. What aspect of this budget would you say that we would take out?" Nothing. Now, that's sort of the extreme example, obviously, but I just think you build trust too, and that would be something I wouldn't have here, is that I've, again, been 21 years in my district. People know me. 21 years in my district, people know me very well, and there's a trust factor that's developed over time that I think I've earned, that I would come in here as a blank slate. You wouldn't know me from a hole in the ground with regard to that. And there would be a period of time that people would have to realize that I can work within constraints, just haven't had that situation. We don't have a cap in Maine. There isn't a 2.5% cap, or whatever, on a budget increase. It can be whatever the townspeople want to support. And in the last two or three years, they're not willing to support big budgets. So when you start to hear people are concerned about the high school budget, and I go meet with the high school principal and say, "We gotta do something, or this budget's going down this year." And we look at it, and we say, "Well, we could adjust this, we could adjust that. This retirement that was scheduled to happen, we don't quite know yet, let's plug it in. We need to take a risk on that, because we're not gonna be able to sell a 3.58% budget increase this year. It's gotta be less than 2% or whatever." So there might be some years when you could support a 5% budget increase. But the last two or three years, it was, you had to keep them tight. We don't get into sort of level service and all that sort of stuff. We look at the sort of whole picture of the budget, and we try to go out and say, "This is what we need to have an excellent school, an excellent school system, we need X, Y, and Z."
So, I mean, you brought up a couple of terms that, you know, are sort of the situations we have, you know, we do start our budget at a level service situation. I think our expenditure per pupil's about 25% less than yours in your secondary system. Coming to Ashland, knowing your sort of philosophy about addressing the whole child, do you have some thoughts on how you'll approach the budget and essentially the community from that standpoint, where you may want to be here, and we're only capable of being at this point?
That's gonna take a little bit of study time. I'm not gonna try to make up some answer and, you know, throw it out on the table. I mean, I'd have to look at your budget. I haven't looked closely in detail. I did see the draft budget on the website, and I looked at, there were some examples of things that you wanted to do that were not level service programs, there were upgrades there. And I remember some comment about, it looked like there might be some more revenues or whatever, and that might happen. But I'd really have to take a closer look at your budget, and I just haven't done that at this point, so I couldn't tell you that. And I'd have to meet your selectmen, I'd have to meet your finance people, I'd have to listen to what their issues are and what their challenges are, that there has to be that learning curve there that would take time. So I don't think I can sit here and tell you exactly how I would do something. I would listen, I would communicate, I'd try to build relationships with them, I'd try to have them have trust in me, and me in them. And I think once you have that, then you can work together on stuff. It's when you're adversarial, or you don't listen, or you don't learn, that you're in trouble. So I don't think I could give you a really clear answer any more than it would take me a period of time to really study.
Thank you.
All right. A lot of these questions, as we go, you may have addressed part of them, but we'll go along. Describe for us how you will improve the overall quality of our staff, including how you might deal with staff who are underperforming, how you will energize staff who, you know, you feel are good, but maybe are coasting, maybe need a boost. And then how do you, how do you motivate and reward those really good staff?
I would hold them to the same standard of excellence that I hope I would be held to. And if, if I didn't do an excellent job for you, I would expect to be told to go elsewhere and find something I was good at, that I believe that's what you do, and you expect the same thing out of yourself that you expect from others. We, in order to hire teachers in the state of Maine, there is a process that we have to go through of recommendation from the principal to the superintendent, nomination to the school committee, and then election by the school committee. It isn't that the superintendent can employ any teachers they want. So I have to, and right now is when we're doing it, we have to do it before May 15th for our probationary teachers, who are, next year would be the first time that they have to go three years. And I would ask the high school principal, Mr. Adams, right, that he would have to meet with me, as my high school principal did last week, and he would have to convince me that the teachers who were going from year one to two, or two to three, or the most serious scenario, year three to what we call continuing contract, which means you basically now own that teacher after that time, unless by Maine law, they are found incompetent to teach and unprofitable to the school system. He has to bring a list of compelling reasons to me. I sit with him on every teacher and I say, "Jim, convince me that this teacher raises the bar, raises the quality of the staff in this school, and give me reasons why that person does that." Because if they don't, I'm not sure I'm gonna go to that school board and say, "We should have that teacher back." If they can't overall increase the quality of your staff, then think about what that causes. It causes an erosion in your staff, things get worse. So they have to be, there was a phrase, and I didn't invent this thing, I learned it from a previous superintendent, and he used a rather gruff phrase that I don't like. He said, "Be plus or be gone." And I didn't like the tone of that, so what we have is raise the bar, that a teacher in order to become a permanent hire at MDI High School, that Jim has to prove to me that they raised the quality of that staff. Now, where it becomes difficult is over time, if you keep doing that, the bar gets higher and higher, and there would come a point where, well, how do you get better than great? I don't know what you do then, and we're not there. So what we ask is if we're gonna form a permanent relationship with that teacher, that I expect them to raise the quality of the staff of that school. I think that's my job as superintendent. It's his job as principal to evaluate that teacher, and to come to me and convince me that's what it is, and then my job to come to you and convince you that that person should now work with your kids for another year, or they should go to another school system. And we tell our new teachers at the opening day workshop, we start off with congratulations, "You've come through a great interview process, you're the top person for this job, and by the way, we have a standard come May, that you need to raise the bar, raise the quality of your school." That's what our parents expect, that's what I'm held to, and I'm expected to raise the quality of the school, or I'm not a very good superintendent. And when I evaluate Jim, he's expected to raise the quality of his school. Whatever we've set for a goal, if it's to increase the culture of that school, then I'm gonna go in and find out that that's increased, he's met that goal. If he's just status quo, or going this way, then I don't want him around, so.
And what is the process when you run into a, a teacher or an administrator who isn't capable of meeting that expectation?
Since this is on some sort of cable channel, I won't tell you a real-life example that is going on right now, but our principals have two-year contracts. And if I see that there's trouble with that principal, the way I send them are strong messages. I say, "I'm not gonna recommend to the school board," because we have to recommend that principal, "for an extension of your contract this year, based on this feedback from faculty, my own, you know, look at your work, the feedback from the school committee, and that means you have one year left on your contract to now follow this action plan that you and I are gonna put together. And if you achieve those goals and get back on track, then next year I'll extend your contract. If not, your contract runs out at the end of next year, and you're unemployed."
And how about the bargaining unit?
What's that?
The teachers. How does that work for the teachers?
Teachers for year one, two, or three, it works just like that, because a probationary teacher needs no reason. If you take a continuing contract teacher, someone who's been there 10 or 15 years, we have a evaluation cycle, it's a five-year cycle that coordinates with their teaching certificate. And they have full-blown evaluation in year one and year four, and then they get recertified in year five. And if the high school principal, the middle school principal, whatever, starts to sense difficulties, including feedback from parents, feedback from kids, are, are part of our evaluation system, then you can either be put on an awareness plan or a mandatory action plan. That if I just sense that, you know, you're really not good at classroom management, then I can put you on an awareness plan, which means I'm coming back in year two, and I'm coming back in year three, and these things need to change and improve. Once you do, you come off of the awareness plan. If you got on a mandatory plan, then if you don't meet that, back up just a second. The awareness plan you and I would develop together. You know, we'd identify what the issue was, I'd get you to understand it was your issue, and then we would work together to make a mutual plan as to where you were gonna go get help, what kind of workshops you were gonna take, whether I was gonna videotape you and help break it down, whatever it might be. But if it was so egregious, that maybe, you know, you yell at kids all the time, and that's just not a good classroom environment, that I might put you on a mandatory plan. And if that doesn't change, then I can recommend that you are no longer fit to teach in the school, and I would then seek your dismissal. We have not, we've had people on mandatory plans, no one has played it out to a dismissal in front of the school committee, and that's where it has to occur. I'd have to basically make a case that whoever this person was, no longer could be there. Usually the teacher resigns before that happens, because it's not good to be non-renewed, as you're a continuing contract teacher, or they're close to retirement, and it's the thing that sort of makes them see, "Well, maybe I should get done." Because there are people that will tend to fade at the end of their careers, and sometimes if you can find a way for them to save face and move away from the education profession, then that's a win-win. We've done retirement buyouts, I don't know if you ever do that, but if you've get, the top of our scale teacher, it's all relative, is probably $65,000 a year. The bottom teacher is $32,000 a year. Well, if you can get somebody near the end of their career to take a two- or three-year retirement incentive, they get the ability to retire, rather than have to stay in the classroom, and the school system saves huge money, because they're more likely to hire somebody early in their career, not necessarily at the beginning of their career. So sometimes by giving an incentive to somebody, you allow them to sort of get what they want, and they're no longer in your classrooms if they're not being productive, so.
Thank you.
Please discuss the differences in our administrative structure with what you are currently experiencing, and describe how you believe you will be able to add value to our current structure.
I didn't hear the last part of it.
And how you believe you will be able to add value to our current structure.
I think your administrative team's remarkably like the one we have, so I don't see it being dramatically different. It's about the same size, about the same structure. We have 13 members of our administrative team, and we have the same sort of structure, superintendent, assistant superintendent, special services director, high school principal, high school assistant principal, high school athletic director, middle school principal, it's the same structure. And the people I've met today are all very strong leaders in my short opinion that I've been here. I think you've hired some good administrators. And that's not meant to send out any message, because I'd probably be just as blunt to say, "You need to make some administrative changes," and that could get me in some hot water, but I've, I've seen some really good people today. And I've tried to hire some good people in our district, a lot of them you would have seen at our meetings. And the same characteristics that I value in my administrators, I see in your administrators. So, seen some positive stuff, people that really care about kids. We tie all our work to our vision, and we update our vision every year. One thing we haven't done well is we haven't done a very good strategic plan. We have an annual vision and goals, we update that every year, but we haven't laid out who's gonna do what, when, and how over a five-year period of time. And that, if I stay in my district, is the next task we're gonna do with our school committee, is develop a really good, solid strategic design. I don't use the word strategic plan, we use strategic design, of what's your role as a school committee member in that? Of selling it to the public, because if we go to standards, that's a huge change. You know, parents who went through school system with grades in A, B, C, and D, and grade point average, and class rank, and valedictorian, salutatorian, are gonna be asked to embrace a system that talks about meet and exceeding standards. No longer would there be grade structures. Now, I don't know if you folks will buy into that theory or not, but if you did, that's a huge selling process to people who did school differently. And you have to be part of selling that vision, you have a role in that. And we have to talk about, again, what happens when. We're right now talking about just the simple act of separating grade from behavior. And that works pretty well in the lower grades. You get up in the high school, that's like, "Can't do that." So there's a whole selling piece about how you're gonna pull that off, and you have a role in that, the public has a role in that, parents have a role in that, kids have a role in that, they should have a say about that. They should believe in that same concept, just like you do, or it's not gonna work. So that's the one thing I feel sort of bad we haven't done, is we didn't realize we needed a strategic plan. And we're talking to a lot of folks now that say, "You're, you're missing a strategic plan, you don't have that." Again, I haven't looked close enough to see whether you have a strategic plan or not, but it's something that a superintendent should work on with their administrators, with their teachers, and by having student involvement in that as well. So, and it can change, doesn't have to be, you know, "This is what we're gonna do for five years." It can be looked at every year and tweaked and molded, but it should be about what you believe in as a community, what you want your kids to have. Once you've done that, and it's, it's tied to your vision statement, that's where you begin, you begin with your vision statement, but it's more than just a vision statement. I brought our vision statement. But it doesn't say who does what when, says what we believe in, but doesn't say, "What's the school committee do here? What do kids do? What's a teacher do?" It's an interesting little document. It's on every wall in every classroom, it's all over the website, but I bet your parent couldn't tell you what was in there. So that's sort of broken, when that doesn't happen. If you don't have everybody on the same page, nothing can happen.
How do you, you said you, you did the vision and the goals every year. Who, what's the input, what's the process for that vision goal?
We do it in the summer at our retreat.
It's an administrative piece.
The administrators all get together, all of us, and in good economic times, we'd go somewhere, like Moosehead Lake, and rent a cabin, and cook and eat and have fun, and work on our vision. In bad economic times, we stay in the high school, in the courtyard, and grill hamburgers and, and do our vision. But we sit there every year and we say, "Have we done any of these things that we said we were gonna do? And are they still applicable? What needs to change? What needs to be ramped up?" We were finding, we were saying too much about everything. So it was like scattershot, it was like painting by throwing balloons at a wall and never getting a nice artistic piece. So we looked at it, and we said, "We need to narrow this down. What are the four or five things we fundamentally believe in?" And then we've worked on those. Our vision has knowing our students, number one, teaching our essential standards, number two, connecting students with standards through best instruction, which is about differentiated instruction, reaching every kid different, and then using ongoing meaningful assessment. That you're actually using formative and summative assessments to really determine what every kid should know and be able to do, and those are our four fence posts now. Where if you go back two or three years, you'll find a different colored sheet, they had one called the flame sheet, because it was all orange and yellow, and there were like 10 things on there, none of which you could do well. So now we've said, "You can't do anything unless teachers know their kids." So what are we doing to make sure that all teachers know their kids well? And then putting our, much of our weight into changing our curriculum to be based on essential standards, which is tied to the common core, which I think you're doing in Massachusetts as the common core, but narrowing that down to what are the most important things? What's it mean to be a graduate of Ashland High School? And then working with teachers to get staff development, to know how to reach kids in different ways that are tied to how they learn, and to their learning style, which is a very hard thing to do, to know every kid and say, "Okay, you need this, or maybe you should read this book instead of that book." It's still about this concept of, you know, man's inhumanity to man, or whatever, one kid might learn that through a completely different material than what you might learn it through, but the concept would be the same for those kids. And then how do you measure that? How do you assess that? And that, right now, is what we... And that, right now, is what we believe in. But we haven't said, like I said, the strategic plan, when are essential standards going to be in place? We'd say, well, when we get there. Well, that's not a very good answer. And have we sold our parents on that piece yet? No. So we've got the fence posts. What we don't have is the strategic design for that. And again, we do that in the summer. We do a two- or three-day retreat. We actually do one when school closes, and then we have a follow-up one in August that includes all our board members. The big cookouts, all the board members, and 37 board members, not five. We have 37 board members, and our 13-person administrative team, and usually the people from our teachers' association. And we sit around and talk about next year's goals and vision.
So I'm going to ask a question. As it happens, we do have a strategic plan, so it's sort of brand-new rolled out. How do you see yourself coming into a district that's sort of just finished a strategic process?
Just finished it?
Yeah.
Well, if it's what you believe in, then I better become tooled up on it pretty quick, and it better be a match with what I believe in, and otherwise, this would be the wrong place. So, again, I'm not sure. I found your strategic plan on your website.
It's on the website.
So.
Yeah.
I'll have to admit, I don't know your strategic plan.
It's fine.
But that would be very important.
That's a matter of fit.
To make sure that those are the same things that I believe in. And you've heard a lot about what I believe in, and obviously, you can work with what you're dealt, but that would have to believe in my fundamental values as well. And I would doubt it's dramatically different. I would assume there's a lot of the same stuff in your strategic plan.
Yeah.
There may be specifics about how detailed it is, maybe about buildings and valuation systems. I'm not sure, again, what's on it.
So you'd see yourself assuming you felt like it was a good enough fit. You'd come in and...
I think a superintendent needs to help be the keeper of that vision. Has to be a keeper of that plan, has to be the instructional leader for that. I don't think of superintendents as managers. That's an old-school model, that I think the superintendent is the instructional leader of your school system. I mean, I have all the answers. I may surround myself with people that are much smarter than me, and I can go to, with those answers. I use my assistant superintendent, who's the brains of our curriculum, and I listen a lot to her when she talks about the things we believe in, because she articulates it much better than I. But I have to be the spokesman for that. I have to carry that to public meetings, and I have to believe in it. So part of what I would do is not try to say that one person does the job, but you have to... You have to be the marketer for that. I think that's what a superintendent should be, is the point person for that. So.
Okay.
That would be part of what I would do. Day one is looking up that, as well as meeting a lot of people and spending a lot of time. But I have to admit, I have not looked at your strategic vision.
Okay. Rob, there's always a small percentage of students who do not qualify for special education, yet they struggle with attendance, work completion, and overall school success. What is your vision for supporting these students in assuring their success in public education?
Probably one of my biggest strengths.
I know.
I set up two alternative schools. One in Dexter, Maine, called Options, which was a building built by the vocational kids. They built the building. Usually, they sold them as little homes for folks. The banks would bankroll the materials, the kids would build the house underneath the carpentry instructor, and then they would sell the house out in the community. We took one of those structures and made it into an alternative school, in which kids that did not fit into the structure of the regular high school would take part of their day and go to the alternative school. And there, they would work self-paced, credit-by-objective, through their coursework. Same standards, same expectations, but it might be that if I was in there, I might choose that I'm going to finish my social studies, and I'm going to work on just that for the next six weeks until I finish social studies. I'm not going to then go to math class, and then go to English class, because right now, I'm focused on social studies. There's a community service piece with that. There's flexible hours. Some kids can't get up and go to school. So you might change their schedule and say, well, you can come in at 10 o'clock, but you're going to stay till 5 o'clock. That you work with that kid in a flexible, self-paced environment. And I started one of those at Mount Desert Island High School that has now been around for 20 years, called Compass Rose, which is the dial on a compass that gives a mariner direction. So it was the name that I thought gave a kid direction. And it has saved a lot of our kids, because it has allowed them to have voice and choice in what they do, and a flexible learning environment with a small group of other kids, with teachers that are very caring to them and about them. And that's allowed them to probably replace what's turned them so off to school and made them at risk, is they don't fit in the regular model. And I think it's probably part of my legacy of that school system, is that program. It's above and beyond. It's extra. It's two extra teachers, extra heat. But every kid that walks out of your building, if they're a tuition kid, that's $10,000 that walked out when the kid said, "I'm out of here," or said, "I'm going to go to a different high school." So we've, I think, saved a lot of kids and had them be able to finish school by using an alternative school model. Now, I'm not saying you need an alternative school, but those other aspects of knowing every kid and reaching every kid, I think, can solve the same problem, if you use it right, long as you have small class sizes. If you don't, then you have to have a model that creates that somehow. And we put that together with donated money. I could not have sold a building in our school budget. So we went out, and the library in Southwest Harbor was building a new library, and they had a little thing called the annex where they stored books. I said, well, that's a cool building. Can we have that building? They said, yeah, if you can move it. So happened to know, because you've been there a long time, you get connections, knew somebody who would give us the $10,000 to get a mover to come over and move it to the high school property. So once it was over there, then I went to the school committee and said, geez, we've got to have a foundation. So they gave us $5,000 for the foundation, and we ended up with an alternative school. It's what we saw right out back when you were there. So I think if you put your mind to something, you can make almost anything happen. Can't necessarily do it through the tax base. You might have to be a little clever. I've got one gentleman that I knew through boating that was the stockbroker for all the rich folks that... He lived on the island, but faced where they lived on Mount Desert, Ford and Rockefeller. And he was the guy that invested their money. So he became very rich himself. And he knew me when I was a kid, running boats for him, running little grocery boats. And he, every year, gives me, not me personally, but through the school system, about $15,000 or $20,000, and says, use it any way you want to help kids, because I know where that money's going. I know you're going to use it for a good purpose. So we've used it for counseling. We've used it to buy prom dresses. We've used it for scholarships. We've used it for almost anything on that list. And he calls in November, it's the proceeds from one stock that he still has, and he says, how's your fund? Do you still need money? I said, of course we do. What kind of things did you use it for? Well, for this, 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 and this. It's just something, you know, through a connection of being around a long time, that you might have to search for that for a while here. Wouldn't be an automatic, but that doesn't mean you can't go after grants. That doesn't mean that those kind of opportunities aren't there. Anyway, I've always thought, if there's a will, there's a way, and I've been lucky. Those things have sort of fallen into my lap. And I'm proud of that. I like to share that. And I don't know if I could duplicate that, but it's certainly a part of who I've been and who I am. And...
I was going to say, you mentioned small class sizes, and, you know, you toured our building, so you know we're not as fortunate with class sizes.
I was not outraged or blown away by large classes. If you're in Maine, they go, oh, Massachusetts, 35, 40 kids in a classroom.
No, we're not that bad.
I haven't seen that in any of the schools that I've visited since the fall. And I've seen several. I've seen manageable class sizes. And I think if you get into the 27s, 28s, 29s, 30s, it's getting a little touchy. 20, 22 doesn't blow me away, depending on the nature of the population, depending on the course itself, depending on what kind of support you have, if you have special ed kids in there. But if you start to get, you know, 30-ish and stuff like that, that's too big to do the kind of work that I think is important. I don't think you can do that. You have to be a different kind of teacher than you can be in a class size in the 20s. Our class sizes are probably 16, 18. And it can get too small, too. You have a class of 10 or 12, you can't have the rich discussion that you can have, and the diverse opinions that you can have. You can have a class size be too small. So I think 20, 22, depending on the level. I think if you get into older classes, you get into more advanced classes, I think they can be a little bigger. You start to get challenging groups, I think you need to narrow those down a little bit. And you have to make sure your best teachers are teaching those, as well as your teachers who maybe aren't quite so much of an expert at it. I think if you're in a school, and you're a teacher there, and you've been there a long time, you haven't earned just the AP classes, that I think you have an obligation to teach a full range of those classes, that you don't sort of earn your stripes and say, oh, I don't have to have that low-level class, that you need that. Our best teachers need to work with our most challenging kids, and have a balance. You shouldn't have, you know, the math teacher is the one who teaches all the calculus because she's... Or he's been there for 20 years. I think they should also teach the developmental math at the same time, because if they're as good a teacher to teach calculus, then they ought to be working with the kids at the other end of the spectrum. So.
I'm next, and I know that you've touched on this in some of your other answers. I asked you earlier what you value most for the students, and my question now is what you value most in your staff and administration.
I'd like to say that I value that they work as hard as I think I do. I mean, I sort of was brought up that hard work's important. I understand that can be unrealistic at times, but I think I value that. I value that they care about kids first and foremost. I've said that before, whether they be an administrator or a teacher, that that's why they're in the business. They care about kids, number one, first thing. And then that they not only care about kids, but they can help kids find their way. It's not just caring, because you can care a lot, but it's the time it takes to talk to a kid. I think, as an administrator, the time it takes to talk to a teacher. Sad story, maybe we won't have time for anecdotes, but I sat with a superintendent once in Dexter who was with a teaching principal in one of our schools, and the guy was struggling. And I was sort of shadowing the superintendent, and he looked at that teaching principal and said, how can I help you find something you're good at? I went, oh, my God. That's a horrible thing to say to somebody. They're a teacher. And the guy said, I always wanted to be a guidance counselor. The superintendent said, I'm going to help you become a guidance counselor, because I think you'd be a really good guidance counselor. You have these skills. And that person became a guidance counselor. They were trapped in a profession in the teaching part that they were not passionate about. And that superintendent, even though they sort of were blunt about that, helped that person get freed from something that wasn't good for them, and got them into something they were good at. So I think an administrator, there's times you have to do that. You've got to counsel people. There are people that get in the wrong places, and they get trapped. They get trapped financially, they get trapped in their families, in their situations, in their mortgages, and there is sort of life after something different that you can change. And that if something... If somebody is miserable in what they do, your job as an administrator is to help them find something different. And if a kid is miserable in your classroom, your job is to help find that kid something that turns them on. So I think that's what you do with your administrators and your teachers. A, they care about kids, and B, they spend a lot of time listening to kids. The principals spend a lot of time listening to teachers. I don't think you automatically go with whatever somebody says, but you spend a lot of time listening to people. I'm all about relationships. Everything I think you do that's productive is about relationships, building strong relationships with people. I firmly believe that, that that's the key, because then people will do stuff for you. A teacher will then listen to what you have to say as a principal and say, I'm going to... I'm going to listen to what they have to say first before I just say, no, we can't do that. That because you've gone out for them somewhere along the line, that they're going to cut you the slack of, I'm going to listen a little more carefully what you have to say. And then you might have that person say, well, that's not that bad an idea. But if you didn't build that relationship, their instantaneous thing is going to be, no, I'm not going to do that, because the administrator said that. That if that's the kind of relationship you have, you can't do anything. You can't force stuff through. You can't push stuff through. You have to... You have to have people to have buy-in. Kids have to have buy-in. So that's what I would expect out of teachers and administrators, and I think that's the culture we have where I work now in most of the cases. It's not perfect. I took you to all the good places. I could have taken you to some of the dark places, you know? Anybody could do that. And there are some places I would have been less proud of to take you around the high school. I took you to the flagship places, obviously, but...
Thank you.
All right. Please describe your current education contacts at the state level, and help us understand how they've benefited you in the past, and may have some benefit for you in the future.
One of the gentlemen at the state level I deal with a tremendous amount is now the Associate Commissioner of Education. Name is Jim Ryer, and he was on the State Board of Education for a number of years before that. And then at one point in his life, he was a used car salesman, which doesn't make him very popular in certain parts of Maine, where people remember him as a used car salesman. But he became the Associate Commissioner of Education, and I have his direct phone line. And when we have questions about budgets and finance, I call him up directly. He'll call me up. Very close working relationship with him. When we were going through consolidation, which was all these separate school districts in Maine, and our governor came out and said, we're going to 26 school districts, one per county. That's going to be it. Going to have 26 superintendents. Too many superintendents in the state of Maine. You realize there are 160 superintendents in the state of Maine, some of which are working in districts with 50 kids. He was basically right, but not to the scope of going to 26 superintendents. That was his way to say, well, we'll probably end up with 90. And that's what we ended up with in Maine. But in order to form those new school districts, superintendents were in charge of putting all the pieces together to sell the new structure, either a regional school unit, or what we kept, the alternative organizational structure. So I had to drive to Augusta and meet with Mr. Ryer many times to say, well, how would we finance that? How would we structure that? And he basically took me through the nuances of the new budgeting that would be required in those. This will probably get back to Maine at some point, but maybe I won't say it. But the present Commissioner of Education, I had an opportunity to hire as a social studies teacher a number of years back, and I did not offer him a position. Yet now, we do talk a lot. He remembers that, and he reminds me of that, that he had left Fairfax, Virginia, schools, and it was one of the places he applied, and he ended up in a nearby school district. But I can talk to him on a personal basis. He's... You can make a phone call directly to him. And when we have superintendent agreements, which are kids that need to go from district to district, he has to approve those. And one of the great things about him is he will take a personal phone call. So I think I have a close working relationship with those two gentlemen, who, one's the commissioner, and one's the Associate Commissioner of Education. But Maine's a small state. It's not really like Massachusetts in terms of its size and scope, and everybody sort of knows there's tremendous connections between school districts and people. And I would think that probably other people could sit in this seat if they were from Maine and say, well, I can call Jim Ryer anytime, and I can call the commissioner. It's sort of the nature of a small state's educational system. So I don't think it's anything special about me or my connection. It's because, you know, there's a lot of conferences and workshops, and they go to those and make presentations. They have two annual superintendent conferences in Maine that the commissioner puts on. One is called the Winter Convocation, and you go there, and the 90 superintendents are there, and he leads you through the new plans for the next year. he leads you through the new plans for the next year. And then in June, there's a closing, end-of-the-year conference called the Commissioners Conference. And you all go to that. And there's plaques for retiring superintendents and a big dinner, and then you talk with him in small groups. So it's a very positive, close relationship, and I don't know how it is here for superintendents, but they, they really try to cultivate that closeness in Maine. The special ed folks at the state level, we deal very closely with. We can call those folks on a regular basis. I don't make most of those phone calls. My special services director does, but she's been with our district almost as long as I have, started as a teacher. And she's on a first-name basis with the folks at the state level in special education. I hope that answered your question, but...
Thank you.
Before we get to our last question, I just want to ask one more question, because we've talked a lot about vision and understandably, a lot about what has to take some time. But, you know, the person who comes in will also have that sort of immediacy of the day to, you know, the superintendent job, as you said, is that leadership and the vision, but there's also that sort of day-to-day. Can you describe how you balance those two pieces so that you don't get caught in the minutia and you keep going with this?
I'm a global thinker, and sort of the vision piece never leaves my mind. But I'm also very type A, and I have to dot every i and cross every t. And this is probably wrong, but I don't let email sit in my deleted box or my inbox. I have to answer it almost instantaneously. I can't let it sit on my screen. So if I happen to have my computer there, I'm answering an email that day, usually within an hour. And once I'm done with it, if it's important, it goes in some file. If not, it's out. It's gone. I don't leave sort of unfinished business around. It's part of being type A, so...
Okay.
But it's always in my mind, the vision piece. But in order to do the vision piece, you gotta get the minutia out of the way. And obviously, when you walk in, that's the things that will first confront you. There'll be all kinds of leftover this and that's and contracts and aspects of that. Sure, you have bus contracts and heating contracts. We have the same sort of thing. We haven't locked our fuel oil in yet. And we, right now, have a contract for the entire district and all the towns that I brokered for $2.93 a gallon. That's what we're buying 160,000 gallons of fuel oil at for this year from one provider. But next year, you know, you're looking right now, it's probably $3.75, $4 a gallon. When is the time to strike on? I have on my computer, the oil widget, the per-barrel widget sits there. And every day, the first thing I do is open it up. Oh, $107 a barrel. Not time yet. We happened to lock it in last year in late June, when it sort of collapsed and went back to like $68, and we said, "Go for it." Boom. We bought 160,000 gallons of fuel. Now, that could've gone the other way. You have to be a little bit of a gambler, but it was a sort of a daily exercise. Open the widget, see what the per-barrel price is, because that's a huge swing in a budget. It can be a budget killer.
Too bad it was a warm winter when you had the good price.
Yeah. But I mean, those kind of things, I can't sort of like not open the widget. If it's there, it's gotta be opened. That's part of a learning disability as well. So I have no problem juggling nuts and bolts with vision. I don't leave things undone. I have follow-up and follow-through. I get back to people, personally usually, eye-to-eye. I don't think a phone call's good necessarily. If you can somehow go to somebody and talk eye-to-eye, you can read body language, you know, which is important. You certainly can't tell that in an email, unless they talk in big capital bold letters or whatever. But I've been known to do that, because I don't like to play with a shift key. If I want to do something fast, I do it all in bold letters. Somebody say, "Why are you yelling at me?" "Not yelling. I'm typing fast." But, you know, for someone who's into email etiquette, that's yelling. You don't use all capitals. Huh. I learned that the hard way. I thought that was a quick answer, but it was turned out to be taken as a loud retort. It wasn't intended that way. So it's much better to go to somebody and talk eye-to-eye, where you don't have to worry about, "Am I yelling at you or not?" No, we're having a good conversation. So, you know, we've lost that, and kids have lost that. They walk around, they're texting each other back and forth. There's gonna be someday that thumbs are gonna be like, they're gonna be thinner and they're gonna be another two inches long. You wait like 100 years. As a biology teacher, that's what will happen. Kids will have thumbs as long as their fingers. Just the way you lost your tailbone, the thumbs are gonna go, "Hmm."
You heard it here first.
There are kids that can text faster than I can speak.
That's for sure.
That's a little scary.
Do we have any questions before we go to our last one?
In their world, it's probably fine, but in my world, it's like, "Wow, look at that."
So this is our last question for you, and it's, so given everything you've learned about our community, tell us why you feel you'd be our best fit for superintendent?
Well, I haven't met your other candidates, so I couldn't tell you I was your best fit. You know, I can't, I'm sure that they have wonderful characteristics, and the things that I've seen, I think, match my skills. So I'd see myself fitting into the kind of things that I've seen. But that's, you know, beauty is in the eyes of the beholder. I don't know that. Fit takes time. It's not an instant thing. And I probably wouldn't know that until I was here for at least a year. You probably wouldn't know it. So if I thought there were things that were adverse to what I believed in, then I probably would've pulled my name out. I would've not put you through this or sat through a day-long interview. I would've said, "I don't think it's a good match." Didn't look at your strategic plan, but I certainly looked a lot at your website. I looked at school board minutes, and I had one situation I looked at in the fall, where I watched every videotape that was on their website for the last three years, because they videotaped all their school board meetings. So I thought, "Well, that's a good way to know what they're about." But I overdid that. That was sort of overkill at that time. But I certainly thought I knew a lot about their district. I knew a lot about each board member. I knew their board relations. I know who got along with who and who didn't get along with who. And I have not put that kind of intensity into any of my latest job searches that I did in the first one. So, because that was probably a mistake. And you learn from your mistakes. I mean, that's part of how you get stronger, you know? Same as coaching. If you don't learn from your mistakes, and, you know, Michael Jordan, whatever got cut from his team in high school, look where he ended up. And I think you teach that to kids. You're gonna, you're gonna make mistakes. It doesn't mean you're a failure. It's what you do with that mistake, how you turn that around, how you become a stronger person. I'll sort of close with that. I remember the University of Maine hockey team, and they won the national championship. They had a coach named Sean Walsh, ended up dying of cancer. But he had like four or five players that he'd recruited from Canada. And something happened with grades and transfers, and they lost their credits, and they were ineligible for the next year of hockey at the University of Maine. And here were kids that came all the way from Canada to go to Maine, and they trusted this coach. And the coach had basically either misled them or misinterpreted or whatever, and they were gonna lose their last year of hockey at Maine and maybe their NHL careers, because they couldn't be out there, because those kids were there to go on to the NHL. And Maine had a national-level hockey team. Those kids went on Channel 5, the national, not national, the local big channel in Maine, Channel 5 in Bangor. And they were being interviewed, and that reporter was trying to get them to say that they had been deep six. They'd been misled. And every one of those kids said, "It's nobody's fault. I'm gonna learn from this. I'm gonna become stronger. This will only make me stronger." Where they could've just said, "Hockey coach blew it. Ruined my future." But they somehow had, in their minds, where you can't change those things. All you can do is use it to make you stronger. And I have that on a tape, and I watched that. And watch, in their eyes, the kids believed that. They were not gonna blame Sean Walsh for that. They believed that the cards that were dealt them were unfortunate, and they were gonna take that, and they were gonna flip it, and they were gonna make it positive. So to me, that, it's pretty inspiring to think about that, because we all make mistakes. We all do things we're probably not proud of. At least, I have. I imagine maybe you've done something in your life that you weren't proud of. It's what you do with that. If you can teach a kid that, that's something I call resiliency. I believe that no longer should education be the three Rs, reading, writing, and arithmetic. They should be the four Rs. They should be rigor. You should challenge yourself as far as you can go. They should be about relationships, whatever, how you describe that. They should be about relevancy, that what you're learning should mean something to you, should be connected to your future, and it should be about resiliency, that you should focus on kids and adults' strengths and not their weaknesses. That you get a lot more by focusing on somebody's strengths than you do on their weaknesses. It's easy to say, "You don't do that well." But it's harder to say to somebody, "You do this really great. And if we could just get that little aspect to be great, then you're gonna, you're gonna fly." And resiliency is ability to overcome any obstacle in your life. And that's what those hockey players were doing, was saying, "No, I'm gonna flip it. I'm gonna focus on a positive. I'm gonna focus on a strength." So if that's the kind of thing that I could live my life by and teach people to live their lives by and have your kids live by, people are gonna get bad hands, you know? All along, things are gonna happen. They're gonna have huge life challenges, but it's how they're gonna deal with that as people. And as an educator, you bring up people. You grow people. And, you know, you had a kid I had when he was 14, one of my classes, who I hired as a teacher, who would probably say that I taught him a lot of that. And I'm proud of that. Makes me wanna cry when I see him.
Yeah, he made us cry.
That he would say something positive about me 25 years later, for somebody who had never said boo to me after that. I'd hired him as a social studies teacher. I knew he was rock solid. But for him to sort of go into an interview with you there and say from his heart that I'd made a difference in his life, it was like, "That's all I need." That's what an educator should do. That's part of leaving a legacy, leaving your mark on kids, leaving your mark on a school system. Otherwise, it's not worth doing, you know? It isn't for money. It's about whether you feel you've contributed, you've made a difference. So...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob.
I think that served as a good closing statement.
I think that would be my closing statement.
Very good. Very nice. Thank you.
But it's what I believe in.
That's great. Well, this has been, been very helpful, hearing all you had to say. So I want to thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
And we are finished with our agenda. If you have a motion to adjourn, we can be done.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.